We will call this meeting to order. Our community, help us with the goal call?
Absolutely. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Payne? Ms. Ellis?
Here.
Mr. Worthing?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Thornton?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, we would please stand and join us in a silent meditation with the presence of the leaders. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the physical, the liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Next on our agenda is recognition of achievement and awards.
Good evening, Mr. President, Speaker of the House, members of the board. Tonight, I would like to honor and commend and, uh, we will be thanking outstanding individuals in the Clark County School District. We will be recognizing many of our students and well, some of our faculty members for their accomplishment this school year. Honors, as I call your names, come to the podium, accept your certificate, and state your board number's names. We will begin with Clark Central High School. We're pleased to announce that Henry Hayes Phillips was chosen not only as a star student for our county, but also was designated as a Region 4 star student. And he chose Mr. Scott Slane as his star teacher. Three CCSP students were chosen as models for the dominance honors program, and they will attend this prestigious four-week program over the summer, where they will have an opportunity to intensely study their area of concentration. All three of these students are from Clark Central High School, and they are the actress Aperson in the area of science, Valeria Garcia Cozo in communicative arts, and Elena Gilbertson Hall in social studies. Clark Central High School Odyssey Magazine, under the advisement of Mr. Draxdale, has won a plethora of awards this school year. This evening, we will highlight only a few of their recognitions. Odyssey Media Group students continue to build a legacy of excellence in state, regional, and national competitions. They have won, uh, several top awards, including the Stravens Award for Odyssey News Magazine, Stravens Award for Illia Literary Art Magazine, All Georgia Best in State, All Georgia Best in State for News Magazine, All Georgia Best in State for Literary Magazine, Gallow Award winner, All American National Silastic Press Association for the Odyssey, the Pacemaker winner, and the Hydro General Magazine Gold Crown winner. The media leadership group that should be here tonight are Lucia Rodriguez, Jordan Graham, and Sutana Poplin. Valen Merritt, Kealan Ritten, the actress Aperson, and Camille Flur. Individual award winners in state, regional, and national competition, and I don't know, are many of them here?
Several.
Are they out there? Right there you are. I don't know if you can see me. Right? Thank you. Carla Dugan, Hannah Gale, Zoe Peterson, Valen Merritt, Julie Alpholz, Kelly Folford, Lucia Rodriguez, Emma Ramsey. Lucia, you can just stand again. You don't have to come back up. Emma Ramsey, Jordan Graham, Sutana Poplin, Olivia Rips, Anissa Colai Natahana, Anna Aldrich, Jenny Lauer, Ashley Lawrence, Valen Merritt, Bria Epples, Elena Gilbertson Hall, Audrey Kennedy, Katie Grace Muncher, Alex Robinson, Mackenzie Pavehill, Owen Churchwell, Caitlin Churchwell, Free Pam, Cole Ellis, Connor McKay, Christopher Fox, Louis Garcia, Gabrielle Matillon Holmes, Lelia Addison, Edward Green, Pauline A. Paper, Isabella Gonzalez, Sam Matchin Parks, and Valeria Garcia Cozo. Thank you all. While there waiting, a special note, Lucia Rodriguez was named Journalist of the Year for Georgia for 2018. Anissa was named second place Georgia Journalist of the Year, and Anna Aldrich was named Junior Champion Journalist. Valeria Garcia Cozo was named runner-up, and we could not do this without recognizing Mr. David Braxdale, our amazing swan. Our next group to recognize is the National Professional Development School Partnership. At the recent National Professional Development Schools Conference, UGA partnership had several honors and presentations by many of our teachers and administrators, as well as UGA professors. Tonight, we would like to recognize those who presented. If they're here, please stand. Dr. Anissa Johnson, Dr. Monica Ant, Mr. Tad McMillan, Ms. Eugenia Tolber, Ms. Sean Minger, Mr. Joshua Neesmith, and Mr. Connor Martin. Additionally, Mr. Tad McMillan, Principal at Clarkville, was selected last year to be on the National Board of this organization. For certificates tonight. For certificates tonight, we would like to recognize Ashlyn Nyland. Ashley is a graphic student at UGA, but she takes classes at our partnership schools and works at Camp Vibe. She was honored as a 2018 Emerging Leader in PBS. And last but not least, we would like to recognize, and last but not least, for PBS, not for recognition tonight, uh, we would like to recognize and express deep appreciation for Dr. Janet Dresden. Dr. Dresden was instrumental in developing the first professional development school partnership within Clark County School District and in establishing us as a professional development school district. Dr. Dresden is leaving UGA this summer, and Ms. Hernamek of Clark County School District will always remain. Thank you. Howard Stroud Elementary School, fourth and fifth grade students at Stroud Elementary participated in community problem solving. That was one component of the future problem-solving program. Their project was entitled Bugs and Bugs: Improving Biodiversity in Our Urban System. The team of fourteen students coached by Leslie Brown from Stroud, Dr. May Kides from UGA, Dr. Leah French from UGA, used their problem-solving skills to research the water-shed environment in the Stroud community. As first-place winners in the junior division, this team has now been invited to the International Future Problem Solving Competition to showcase their project at the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. For fifth grade, we have Hermione Diller, Deja Dubos, Christian Taylor-Weber, Amaria Ford, Caleb Glenn, Kamora Holliday, Quinton Stevens, Azariah Taylor, and Marilyn Cruz. Fourth grade, Coriana Barnett, Giovanni Barrera, who else? Yesipah Coromina Costela, Jeremiah Cunningham, William Jackson, and Jada McCollum. On behalf of the Clark County Mentor Program, I am happy to acknowledge the amazing work that our school counselors do every year. We're grateful for all twenty-one of the counselors in the Clark County School District who helped to make the mentor program run smoothly. Tonight, I would like to recognize three of our awesome school counselors who've made a significant contribution to the program this year. The Sea Horizon Star Award is Cassie St. Clair from Gaines Elementary School. The Clark County Mentor Program would like to present Cassie with the Horizon Star Award, where the enthusiasm for her students is infectious and evidenced by the number of new mentors she has recruited today and this year. The Above and Beyond Award goes to Cynthia Ballard of Chase Creek Elementary and Ashley Perry of Clark Middle School. Ms. Ballard has been a steady encourager and constant resource for the mentor program this year. Ms. Perry formed an excellent mentor activity activities for Clarkville and also serves as a Clark County Mentor Program liaison to all the counselors of the district. And go through the middle school's SFA. Congratulations to the following winners in the state and the state across science states. First place for animal systems, Ella Markov and Emma Matt O'Hannon. They measure protein barcodes in four-speed labels versus actual protein levels using protein test strips and testing you can expect from monitoring. First place social systems, Ella Johnson and Victoria Radatak. They research dog food brands and people's preference for each brand. They also research appropriate weight levels and dog food amounts for dog breeds included working dogs, dairy, and common pets. They are, will be competing in Indian apples represented in our schools. The following students placed the state's science and engineering fair classics winner in March. First honors, Ella and Victoria, once again. They studied the impact of different substrates on the growth of our four different species of lettuce. Ella Johnson and Victoria Rad. Other honors, Sam Ryan and Isabella Morgan. They received third honors for the topic of which baskets, butter, aluminum, alloy, and positive or wooden. Holden needs studied by testing different robotic sensors. Holden attempts to understand engineering decisions behind the creation of automated driving system technology. Natalie compared the data of weather predictions for different new schools to see what was more accurate. And it should, Ella and Victoria were named Rockcom Masters nominee, and they were nominated, profiting in the top ten percent of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade participants in this prestigious competition. After they completed their online application of three hundred projects, thirty finalists will then present their research projects in the P E C, and the team hands off stamps to them. And that concludes our introductions for this evening.
Congratulations again to all of our honor readers. We appreciate all the work you do and the efficiency of your service. We're gonna continue on with our, uh, our meeting, and of course, everyone is more than welcome to stick around. For a less exciting part of our meeting. It's still very important. Next on our, our list of, uh, of items is we need to amend or adopt the agenda.
What's this part?
Yes.
What to amend the agenda? Please to remove the executive session prior to adjournment.
We have motion for Ms. Davis to, to amend the agenda to move the executive session just before the adjournment, and this is something that, uh...
One second.
Second, my Ms. Ms. Thornton? Any questions about, about that?
Yeah, she needs to say why we, what's gonna take place in the executive session. For the purpose of what?
Yes, the appointment, employment compensation, hiring dismissal, or evaluation of importance.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Hold on. Also for what? Evaluation of the superintendent, uh, evaluation committee?
Yes, the eval, oh, the evaluation committee, meaning to address this issue.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any questions? Any other questions around that? All in favor of that amendment? Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. I'm Ms. Davis. One second, my Ms. Williams. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Next on our agenda is the recognition of visitors. Speakers will be limited to three timed minutes. At this point, remarks should be concluded. No speaker shall indulge in personal attacks while speaking. All comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of our students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. Personal, personal concerns may be addressed in writing to the superintendent or the president of the Board of Education. And first on our list of, of speakers is Pam McMillan.
Greetings, honorable board and superintendent needs. My name is Pam McMillan. I run Respectful Ways. We are a social-emotional learning curriculum for pre-K through twelve grade students to learn social skills and emotional intelligence. Uh, my staff and I had the pleasure yesterday of meeting, uh, Dr. Scott Demard and Dr. Rosie Cooper, um, with your faculty, to talk about Clark County and how to show them just how unique and special Respectful Ways is as a program. We speak to your children's needs through pop culture trends that they're used to. So we have emojis and speech bubbles, raps, rhymes, slogans. So for example, the reality is that you often, we send our kids into in-school suspensions to st, to sulk, to be upset. Well, why not give them guidance? Why not teach them a research-based activities that show, for example, forgive so you can live? That is one of our modules that we offer. Why not teach them research-based activities, um, for example, your life is not defined by a moment in time. Five research-based activities, um, take the high road while they're in school suspension. We have fifty-four modules that we offer, and it's purchased out of cart. This is what makes us very unique. They're based on your specific behavioral issues at your school. So you don't have a program that we hand over that you may not like, may not need. Um, you purchase it out of cart, you design your own program for your school. Uh, we are designed to be school-wide. Now, I did bring up in-school suspensions because we offer every faculty member to have access to the digital curriculum for the entire school year. So go and revisit your pain points if there happens to be a police situation. Go back to the, be the change, uh, module. So you have access at any given time for the entire school year for all faculty. Educators run the, the online system. It sounds, because we're online, it sounds like students, but they're working in their notebooks. Extremely important, this is where emotion comes out, this is where it's authentic. So we, our research shows that online is very important, your educator controls that. Um, I know you've adopted PDI, it's an advocate, and there's a missing link, and that link is curriculum to teach emotional intelligence. That's what we offer. Um, we're proven effective through Georgia State University research. So our ask is we're hiring three to five schools, um, but with different behavioral needs, so we can teach our children Respectful Ways.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I leave each of you, uh, for sure? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, uh, will be Ms. Willa Phamborough.
Good evening. I'd like to speak tonight on, uh, the youth bill program that is done, being done in partnership with, uh, Quizon Paint and Construction Company and the Athens Land Trust. Uh, there is a request at the school board now for use of one of the buildings down in West Broad, um, for materials to be stolen. And that program is for youth, it is teaching youth about the construction industry, whether you want to be your own boss or whether you want to work for somebody. And we know that the wages are quite high in, uh, the construction industry. And also, the bonus part of this is that the people in the West Broad and Hancock Carter will be having their homes repaired at no cost. So I asked the school board to partner with these two, uh, with, uh, Quizon and with the Athens Land Trust and allow them to use of that building. I also want to speak tonight on West Broad School. Uh, at some point between now and seventeenth, the Athens Land Trust, uh, will be, uh, presenting the school board with proposal for the, for the, um, West Broad School and for that whole campus. And the proposal is very unique. In taking a long time, I, I was supposed to explain it to you, but what, what's going on at that site right now. Uh, I can say a few things about it right now. Uh, it is a garden, as many of you know, as many of you come and visit, and it is a place where we have farmers' market and garden. And people come out, people from the neighborhood, people from all over the community come out and fellowship with one another, and have a good time and buy some good stuff. Um, I, I maybe shouldn't say this, but it's probably gonna cost about six point two million dollars to restore and repair that building. I don't think that the school board has that money. Uh, we, the, the Land Trust does not want to own that building. I hear a rumor going around in the community, they have no intent on owning that building. That building belongs to the community and the alumni who went to learn the school. And I would love for the board to take this into consideration and allow, uh, a partnership between them and the Athens Land Trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker will be Mr. Quizon Payne.
Let me say good afternoon, and thank you to all of the fine people that served in Clark County to make Athens, Clark County, the best city for our students. Uh, just wanna take just a moment to thank you on behalf of the Payne family and my father for all of your acts of kindness in his recovery, your cards, your calls, your visits, your prayers. It's just how hard to mend a soul and serve a person just is, and it will be here for the short. Just to feedback on just a couple of things that Ms. Phamborough had stated earlier, and I don't want to re-state it, but I do want to differentiate one thing. Uh, the young urban builders solicited the community for sign-up for immediate repairs needed to homes. And in the sheet that you give them, there's six hundred forty-one homes have signed up with various needs. We had anticipated starting the program the first of July, but what happened was many calls came in that were life safety issues. Homes that had bathrooms that were not working, homes that had electrical problems that could potentially burn down in that. So we had to kick-start the program early and move forward with the construction process, with the construction process. But right now, we are a construction organization with no home. So we're asking, you know, this Jane Branson, I'm not too proud to beg it, is begging, whatever you want to call it. We're asking for your immediate response to grant us access to the second half of the building that the younger farmers already in. That would give us a place for stored material, leftover materials, or renovations that are currently underway right now. And that's the essence of my request, and I still have one there.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Our next speaker will be Walter Swanson.
Good evening. I'm retired school teacher, thirty-three years teaching in Florida. I was, uh, three times Teacher of the Year for my school, although one time doesn't count because the fact that you voted not to have any Teacher of the Year elected was the first year of that. And so the principal gave everybody's certificate. State legislature did merit for us teachers one year, and I got that. I was one of only two teachers in my school to get that. I've been PK president and has also been the local N E A, uh, president. But wait, Ralph Staitn hired me, uh, and he later became superintendent of schools there. He asked me a question, he said, "Did you graduate with honors?" And I said, "I'm sure I did not." Uh, and what I also didn't tell him was I was on academic probation one semester. He said, "Good," because I had, ah, three people teaching with honors. They just couldn't understand why the students couldn't learn. They, they tell them and teach them, and, you know, they, they, they were frustrated, and then, well, we have a problem in this county in that eighty percent of the students are minority, eighty percent of the teachers are white. I think those figures are wrong because this is like two years ago figures. But for seven years in a row, it's like that. And so I'm gonna show you how you can hire more minority teachers, which is always a play, but we just can't find, can't find that one. I've been told, but that sometimes principals want to have to hire quote-unquote "super Negroes" as, uh, to be hired, although many of my friends who are minority use a... Although many of my friends who are minority use a different word. And that's not what you should look for. My example might show you right there. I wasn't a super person in school. You cannot tell what makes a good teacher. You can tell, actually, but you can't predict. You cannot predict what's going to make a good teacher. And so you need to just hire some more minority teachers, whether they look like they're going to be great or not. If they're not great, there's a way to get rid of them. It's like you can get rid of everybody else. But you need to just hire some more. Because if you're a minority student, which so many of you are here, they do not have, I don't say they don't even have the respect when they look at the teachers and they're eighty percent white.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Brett Andrews.
Hello? Okay. I just want to share some takeaways from Athens for Everyone's latest education meeting focused on ADA class action on students in GMS, placement of students in alternative settings and processes for placing students in special education programs. Keith Everson, Executive Director of Middle East Georgia Research, provided background on how the lawsuit originally targeted contaminated facilities desperately in need of repair and then evolved into a more general challenge that separate facilities for students with disabilities violates the Americans with Disabilities Act, segregating students with disabilities without providing equal opportunity to participate in school services, programs, and activities available at the same age for years without disabilities. Below the case seems to be indefinite hold. CCSD should be proactive in ensuring that we're acting in compliance with ADA and IDA requirements. Does the district already employ someone whose job description involves reviewing all placements outside of the home school? We feel this is critical not only for compliance with law, but also to ensure positive development of students with disabilities with behavior issues. Even with experts in the room, there's no consensus that all placements to RUTM, Compass, or the new temporary behavior centers would be fully compliant with ADA or IDA requirements. We also discuss concerns about disproportionality about race and suggest more scrutiny when students of color are placed in an alternative setting, whether it's Catapult, Compass, RUTM, or one of the new temporary centers to ensure that bias does not influence the placement decision. We also noted that chronic misbehavior can result in label of emotional behavior disorders which could permanently affect the quality of education that student receives. The majority of students with an EBD label and who receive alternative placements are students of color. And we as a district must ensure that these students in particular have adequate access to support services before such placements are made. Many parents don't understand services offered, processes available, or even basic rights they have. And plopping a ten-page document of legal and technical jargon in front of them is not enough to count as due diligence. We'd like the district to consider reinstating the advocacy program, Parents Help Good Parents, or something similar, and the Know Your Rights workshops when it's offered, and investing in more services that provide advocates in situations that could lead to legal displacement in alternative setting or special education. Mature organizations such as Citizen Advocacy and communities and schools can help if the student would commit funding stipends and training programs for willing advocates. This would also increase the level and quality of parent engagement in our district. Finally, we believe strongly that up under school to practice that it would require heavy engagement from students and families and offer opportunities for positive growth and building trust will also cut down the disproportionality in alternative placements and special education services. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight will be Moni Blackwell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for advocating that for October three fifteen PM to be had. I appreciate that. I was going to start by congratulating the students who have been here. But they're still here. So it's really encouraging to see all the students that our district has clearly benefited. They'll be very much recognized here today. I'm here to speak on behalf of one of the students who believe that's been failed by our school district. I obviously remember wanting to put the blame on any one individual because when things happen, it's all our responsibility and all of us need to be held accountable when people slip through the cracks. Over the last month, I've been working with one of the students accused in the Cedar Schultz incident as they have scrambled to complete the six remaining courses that they have online with no support, no teaching resources. And, you know, quite frankly, since I have been trying to join you all on the board and have been frequently door-to-door, most evenings, we don't begin our meetings to start his work until around eight-thirty or nine PM. And so I've personally seen firsthand the dedication that this young man has to just proving that he really wants to come back to school. He just wants to be in the classroom. He wants to get this education, this education that is supposed to be provided as a right to all students in this district. And I just really want to just really, I guess, hammer down the point that, you know, we often talk about student achievement and see students who are trying to figure out, how can we get them engaged in education? How can we get them to care? And then to see a student that already does care and has been ousted by the school district and is not fighting to just get a, just to be in a class, just to have a teacher there to help him. And I just don't feel like that's right. We, a few other folks have written an email about this and we did not hear back about it. From what I heard, it was because we aren't family. That's fine. I know that now he has sent an email of his own. So I just really want to encourage you to try to respond to that at the time we pass it because the deadline for him to finish his courses is in June. Yeah, somewhere around two to three months to finish six courses. And that's just not feasible for anyone, especially through the online program. We've heard plenty of concerns about that program and how difficult it is for students to complete one or two courses. So six courses, well, we're trying to figure out formulas off the top of our head, things that are basic things, things you can calculate, there's formulas you can use, things they just haven't had. And so we're trying to draw too much for a short span of time. So I really hope that you can either get that deadline extended or at least some sort of explanation as to why we don't feel like he deserves to have the same equal opportunity to education as everyone else. So thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our visitors and speakers this evening. Next up is our superintendent report.
Thank you for providing the board members. I just only have a few items. The first is, I guess there's a theme in this evening for me and it's the theme is transparency. So those who are tuning into our CCSD YouTube channel will be able to see this meeting spring live. We know that there are some community members who are unable to come to board meetings. So if you tune into the CCSD YouTube channel, you can see this meeting live streaming. Second item, we, as a school system, we promised that we would make the audits of the Cedar Schultz incident that occurred on February fourth, twenty sixteen, and the audit along with Michael Scott employment case public. If you go to the district homepage, you will see both of those audits posted. We obviously protect the means of individuals who are involved. But the general reports of both the Cedar Schultz incident and the Michael Scott employment case is on our homepage right now if you, if someone's interested in reading both of those audits. I've shared with the board, I'll share with the community, that obviously I was not here during both of those incidences. But what I would share with the community is that there is a need for us to examine our systems as a school disparate to avoid the type of situations that happened with both the response to the Cedar Schultz situation from an administrative standpoint and also how we handle the employment situation of Michael Scott. And so we're working, we're working hard to address those issues. Pivoting to May seventeenth, that's a special board meeting. It's a special business meeting for the purpose of really three different things. One is to allow the board to act on recommendations we'll have for five principal vacancies. We'll be spending all day tomorrow as a team to conduct second round interviews for the Howard B. Stroud vacancy, principal vacancy, the J.J. Harris principal vacancy, Chase Street School vacancy, and the Cedar Schultz Clark Central principal vacancies. So we'll bring those names. That will be one of the three items for the May seventeenth meeting. The second is to really dig into and talk about where we are with our charter system, how we are, what questions the board may have around the charter system, and what are some potential solutions to some of the issues that I see in that language right now and what our team believes can create some clarity for everyone, for administration and community. And then the third component is just to give you an update on how many proposals we would have received by May seventeenth for your requests or information pertaining to the West Broad property. Ms. Veronica Jackson in our procurement office is the individual who will be receiving those proposals. I haven't seen any. They don't come to me, they go to Ms. Jackson. And so we'll be able to give you an update on how many we received and where those proposals have come from. So that'll be the May seventeenth meeting. And I guess the last thing I would share with you because it just came up in our finance committee meeting is actually a very good suggestion and idea that I would just want to put on your radar, your radar screens as board members. There's been a request for the board to have an opportunity to talk about and to dig into the budget prior to the June seventh meeting. You're scheduled to have one business meeting on next, the first Thursday in June, which is June seventh. Your schedule in June changes a little bit according to your history. You typically don't have a first and second Thursday meeting in June. You didn't last year at any rate. The suggestion, going back to the suggestion from the board, the suggestion is prior to June seventh, where you are asked to approve the budget. And I think Mr. Hannell has publicized and advertised that the budget will be voted on by June seventh, that you have a meeting of the board prior to June seventh for the purpose of the board asking questions pertaining to the budget. So I would just ask you to look at your calendars between now and the seventh. We don't have to do the calendar activity now. But if you could please start thinking of potential dates that could work where you can convene for the purpose of reviewing the budget as a board and asking those questions as a governing body. Okay? That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you. Mr. President, can I ask Dr. Meehan's question?
Sure.
Dr. Meehan, first, I've heard very good reports of your presentation and your visit to Wood Davis last night. There is still the outstanding question that was hit with in terms of because the principal at Wood Davis has apparently stepping away from the position and did so at a rather late date. What type of timeframe would we be talking about in terms of replacement?
Sure, that's a great question. So next week, Wednesday, our human resources team will be at Wood Davis to start the same process that we use in the five other school communities, working with the faculty from three to four-thirty, then working with the community from five to seven five to seven on May sixteenth. On May twenty-first, the LSGT, the local school governance team for Wood Davis, will convene to screen candidates for that principal vacancy at Wood Davis on May twenty. They made a change of dates. We're tentatively scheduled for that team to get together, I mentioned it first. And we're tentatively planning to have the LSGT have their interviews with those candidates on a tentative basis, I mentioned before, with the idea that we wanted to come back and meet with you and have a recommendation for you at the June seventh meeting. So it's all in the name of understanding that we won't be able to bring the Wood Davis recommendation to the board on May seventeen. We do intend to bring a name by June seventh. It will force us to accelerate the process. As of yesterday, we had fourteen candidates for that vacancy. We hope that between now when that team starts to screen down candidates, that there will be more viable potential leaders in the pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. President.
So you would like us to look at our calendars for a meeting prior to June the seventh?
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to, so what happened on June the seventh?
The way that we have advertised the budget and the process the board is to approve or to approve the budget. You're supposed to act on the budget at the June seventh meeting. The recommendation, and again, this is, in my prior experience, I'm used to this as well, the board should have an opportunity to just talk about the budget by themselves. So right now, the way that this process is constructed, on May eighth, the fifteenth, and the twenty-third, there are options for the community to come in and give feedback and ask questions of the budget process. But there isn't a set aside time for the nine of you to have that conversation. And so since we have already advertised that the board is to act on that, on the budget by June seventh, it's our recommendation that we try to get together prior to June seventh for the purpose of you asking questions. Ideally, you would have at least time to ask questions. We may not be, we may not be able to answer those questions at that meeting. We can bring responses back to you before you act on June seventh. I think it's just good, it's good, it's good due diligence. You're doing your due diligence if you have that type of meeting. I apologize that it's an extra meeting for you. But at the same time, I think it's showing politeness in getting into the budget.
And so I guess my question is, we have two more budget hearings, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And there has not been a huge turnout from past years. I don't know, this year may be different.
Wait, can you use the mic?
Awesome. We have two budget hearings scheduled. And in past years, we have not had a huge turnout from the community. I mean, sometimes it's just the board member and the mayor. Is it possible, and I guess we can decide now, either one of those two dates that are already scheduled, is it possible for us to use those dates for the board members to agree to?
My recommend.
Oh, and it's, you know what, it don't use matter of time.
Plus, I would just procedurally, I would recommend that you don't move in that direction. If you advertise those meeting dates for the public, then that's for the public. And if you need to set time aside for yourself, then you should do it. I think what we can do in the future is maybe look at the number of public meetings. And if you want to go from three to two and carve out one of those three meetings for yourself, that that's, that makes a lot of sense.
Also, keep in mind, we have to abide by the law. I think the law says we must have three.
But also, we could also do this as a budget review as a board and a work session prior to time to present it, could we not?
I think that's the challenge for the next work session you have scheduled.
I mean, not for this year. But going forward, I remember that being a huge piece of our work session. Took us into many hours, late hours.
That's a possibility as well, yes.
But that's scheduled. We never had any schedule and had regulations.
Well, we can, it may take a little bit of flexibility to get, to get this, the process for this year the way we want it to be. And then for next year, we can maybe be deliberate about having space on the calendar for deliberative, but without.
And again, what I would recommend is that you should set. And I, I, again, what I would recommend is that you, you should set time aside that is dedicated to the budget. I think sometimes when you try to add that type of work onto a work session, it does make the night late, and then you, you're unable to address other business of the board uh because you, you dedicate it to our, to that power, to budget work in itself. This, this is, when you think about the work of the board, there are three major components of the work of the board. One is the, the employment oversight of a superintendent. The second is developing policy. The third is the budget. And so um the, when you talk about what the role of a board member is, you need to have time to dig in one of the three major pillars of the work. Uh so I would respectfully say, uh I've seen boards try to do this type of budget work on top of or in conjunction with a work session. It makes that night very long, um and, and then you kind of lose focus of the other things that are on that agenda today. I'm sure that wouldn't happen with this, this credit.
You're getting ready, we'll get to it later. Um, thank you for that report. Uh I would call your attention to, um, I have a theme. We have several informational items that are available and are part of our packet for discussed uh considering our work sessions. Those are available um on our website for anybody who'd like to dive deeper into those informational items. Moving on to uh board reports. Uh, do you have a report? Are you skipping past all the, the, one, one of those items is not ever reported on the session page? Understood, thank you, yes. Um actually, two of those items. We had, uh, we received my email from, from Mr. Davis, a report on the parent advisory board meeting. Um we all received, any, any additional information there?
Yeah, I, I'm just, um, first off, in the membership of the, the folks who are, who are here tonight, I mean, this was the parent advisory board, I think it's one representative per school. Is that, is that correct? Okay, one per school. Uh so there were sixteen, I mean, thirteen votes in, in attendance. Um and in terms of content area, you know, Dr. Means asked it, answered a number of questions, you know, dealing with um the, uh charter uh system contract and, and that was kind of the center. I just want to raise to other board members, um, kind of something to think about. I know we're not going to discuss it now, but I, I'm, you know, being there, and I did talk to Dr. Means about this a little bit, uh I'm not sure what my role is. And so I'm, I'm not, it's not that I'm not willing to go, but it's, it's something that I would like, you know, clarification as to, um, you know, what exactly, you know, would a board member represent? I know we've done it forever and today, and just, you know, I'm not saying I shouldn't go, I'm not being lazy or anything, I just, I just want some clarity in terms of, of our role. Um and also, I, I was a little confused, because I got there at six, but then maybe I shouldn't have been there till six thirty. So that's something I would like some clarity also. So um I don't have to worry about it for another number of months, but.
You have to take my time, don't you?
Yes. Oh, your time is, Jim? Okay, now I need to ask that now. Um but then our meeting in June.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, then our meeting. So we can postpone it, but I do think we need to, you know, just put that as a topic, President, in terms of that stuff.
Thank you. Uh and also, thank you, John, uh Foundation for Excellence report.
Right. I have a report that I'm, I have a question, and I'll try to do this in exactly one minute. Uh Foundation for Excellence hosted its non-needstee at the, in the last month. Uh they moved to an online application process for awards, which is always a scary thing, but they managed not to have a drop-off in the number of applications. And the process, by most reports, was um easier on the principals and other people than in the past with all the paperwork. And so the tea was held at Trump's at South Village. Uh Dr. Means spoke briefly and eloquently. Claire Williams was also present, and we received a rousing speech near the end from the executive director, C.J. Amerson, who is familiar with any of us Williams firm. So I just wanted to give that very brief update on what's going on with the Foundation for Excellence as you're wrapping up that board. Thank you. Now, my question about one of these items was, I did want to ask a question about the SWAS five receipts. They're on page ten, I believe it is, the PDF. Um looking at the monthly receipts, we had been well ahead of normal or normal projected um for the entire time until February of eighteen. And I just wanted to ask, um, did we see that? Is it just kind of coming down off the football high uh in terms of uh sales taxes? Or, yeah, is, is there any insight into, into that? Just because the total amount of monthly revenue is, is of relevance to what we do as a board?
The monthly goal is always one point eight million dollars.
Right.
And, and so I think, yes, we exceeded that goal for most of the fall. Um and so we were, we're still pleased with the fact that we hit the goal. Um and factors include there isn't as much commerce in the community as a result of a fall activities compared to winter, and it's where you're going to.
We don't think that's going to keep falling off.
No, typically, you see a spike in the fall. There, there's certain, there's certain months of the year where you see the one point eight, one dollar goal, and sometimes you, you, you're at right at that goal.
Yeah, we're in good shape, I just wanted to ask inside. I looked at the graph, and so I'm just, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is the explanation, it's seasonal? Thank you.
Uh moving on to board reports, then, is there a report for GSBA?
Yes, there is.
Please.
Um April twenty third, I went to the Go Mill Operations Committee of GSBA. Um and just for the folks who may, um, be familiar with it, because I wasn't familiar with it until two years ago. This is the first step uh to develop policy for the Georgia School Board Association as it interacts with the legislature. And so what we go there for, there's a committee that, of the, of GSBA representatives who meet at this time every year. They're about to establish uh what their positions are so that in the next legislative season, um our lobbyists, uh or lobbyists will be able to, to, to take positions on certain pieces of legislation. So this board uh passed three proposals for the upcoming, um, for this, for this meeting to be adopted by the Georgia School Board Association as policy. Um the first that we did, and then I did introduce this last, last meeting, but I just, again, I just want to, for the sake of transparency, kind of go over this and let people know. Uh I went to this meeting and make and proposed um the following addition to one of the positions of GSBA, and that is that uh GSBA encouraged QBE funding to be indexed yearly for increases in inflation. Um and that's something that had, we had this all along, then we would probably be the best school system in, in the nation and not the world. But uh that did not happen. So anyway, we put that in there, and that was passed. There were two other pieces that, a proposal, two other proposals that got put forward that, that received about a, a third of the people present, their support. Uh one of them, uh they were both on federal policy. So asking GSBA to take a, a stand on, on federal policy. And one of them dealt with DACA, um to uh push for that. And the other was to uh pass, to encourage Congress to pass a comprehensive immigration piece of legislation. Um and that both these things would have a, if, if they were done correctly, they could have a, a very positive effect in Clark County with, with our students and, and families. Uh those two did not pass. However, um I was, but please, a third of the people there are disappointed. And then Evita will take these two, I've already talked to her, and she said that she's willing to push forward on these two at the summer meeting, June, uh where she will be our representative. So we want, we will keep on.
Thank you. Uh next up is the Government Relations Committee.
We will have our next meeting on Tuesday at four thirty, right over there in the, in the Heritage Room. Um it will be at, yeah, four thirty. And we are having our legislative delegation, we'll all be there. Uh we're talking about Senator Cowser, um, I always feel nervous about naming these guys because I forget, uh Senator.
Ken Braxton.
And uh Representative Frye, Representative Wallace, and Representative Gonzalez. And um we did have a meeting yesterday with, with, um, I think it's Dr. Means, and also Claire Suggs, who just got welcomed aboard. And we're, we're going to be focusing, and I'm saying this to encourage not only people in the community, but also board members who are not under committee to attend. And that is, um, we're going to be talking about uh QBE funding versus, you know, um what it could be had, if it indexed for inflation, what it actually is. We're going to um uh also talk about um the expenditures at Clark County taxpayers are having to do for, for transportation, because there's a big gap between state uh compensation for transportation and what we're having to pay. Uh we're also talking about funding for pre-K teachers. And um we're also talking about um how pre-K teachers are, are actually not on the teacher scale and are, are being grossly underpaid, and as a consequence, um are financially having to be, are encouraged to, to, to go through, go to, start working K through twelve as opposed to pre-K. So um anyway, I extend the invitation to all board members, and it would be great if, if we could have a, a full collection of folks as well as members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next up is the Finance Committee. Can you report?
No.
Policy Committee?
Um the only thing I have to report is that we did not have a meeting scheduled for May because of Memorial Day, but now we do, and um that'll be on your calendars. And that's to wrap up finishing, not to finish, discussing V H and the other, and just really V H and the other remaining V policies we're getting very close. Yes, to your question.
Do you, Wood Davis?
It was that, it was the, uh, it ended up being Tuesday to twenty second, Tuesday, May twenty second, at four o'clock here. And that was an, an added meeting as well for this month. So thank you all, but I just didn't want to let it go another month with all the momentum that we have.
Thank you. Uh finally, Property Committee? Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is a series of uh action items. First there is the minutes of previous meetings. We received uh meetings for a work session April fifth, twenty eighteen. Dr. Means, you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir, thank you. Sir, my, my recommendation, Board of Education, uh approve these minutes.
I move that we approve the uh minutes for the work session and also the regular meetings uh that were sent to us in our packet, uh random therapy. I move that we approve it.
Thank you. Is there a, a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes. I have corrections um for both of those. On page fifty-four of the PDF, what we got, under minutes of previous meetings, the statement says, Doctor, the statement says, Doctor Knox asked. Uh please change that to, Doctor Knox asked that Claire Suggs, Claire with an E, we want to make sure we got her name right, and C.J. Amerson's name, names probably were be corrected. So Doctor Knox asked that Claire with an E Suggs and C.J. Amerson's name be corrected. That was on page fifty-four. Um on page fifty-eight of our packet, which is the minutes for the regular meeting, in the shaded area where it says, on a motion by Greg Davis, um the final sentence should read, the motion did not pass due to, so there are two things. Uh cross out the ED and then due to, TO, now they have them required to, so it's.
We have some suggested corrections to, to the minutes. Uh is there a motion? Would you like to change a motion, or amend your motion to?
Well, what I did, I made the motion, got a second to it, and then Doctor Knox said personally, so we just corrected the minutes, all for approval. That those minutes are going to be corrected by someone, I'm assuming.
Yes, we're working on it very quickly.
Okay, all right, okay.
Fantastic, thank you. And then all in favor of, of a doctor goes minutes as, as corrected by Doctor Knox?
Yes.
Repose? Thank you.
All right.
Next up, we have a financial report.
We have the board members, staff, today's. Uh tonight, we're going to talk about the March two thousand eighteen four minutes, assuming board of financial statements. Uh for the month of March, uh to highlight the side of the balance sheet, currently have a balance, cash balance of fifty-two point three million dollars, and we currently have a fund balance balance of fifty-two point three million dollars. Let me get into details. Couple things I want to highlight on the revenue side before we look at the KPIs and cash flow. As you can see, um the revenues have alarm tax. Currently, I collected ninety-eight point nine percent of the property taxes due to the school system. So we're well ahead of schedule there. If you go down and look at the bottom revenue, we're at eighty point four percent. Um the KPIs should show that we're about one point four percent, or ten to one percent behind where we're last year at collecting revenues. On the expense side, we're at sixty-two percent total spent year-to-date, and we are about two percent below where we were last year, which is helping us out with the deficit in current budget. Lynn, can you go put it down? On the cash flow. Go the ways that they go. On the cash flow, currently, we have a budget of one hundred and forty-two point eight million dollars in revenue. We have collected, projected to collect one hundred and forty-three point one million. But the current uh budget, corrected than actual, is about two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars, shooting, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and without expenses. On the expenses, we have a budget of about one hundred and forty-six million versus projected expenditures of one hundred and forty-two point five. Currently, we're projected to spend three point four million, three point five million dollars less on the current projection rate, which means that if you add those two amounts together, we're projected to spend and collect uh three point seven better than what the budget saved. And compare that to the deficit of a three point one that we run into the budget you're with. Currently, we're looking at the projected surplus of five hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars at this time. Lynn, can you go look here, please? So if you look at the cash position and the fund balance position, you'll notice that we are ahead of schedule last year in terms of how much more money we have, how much more robust the fund balance is. That balance is more robust by about three million dollars. You can see that the curvature of both those amounts is equal to what last year, but we're just ahead. Lynn, can you go next to us? If you look at the March collection, uh red versus blue for the prior year, you can see it's a little bit smaller, that's the point four, four to one percent less than collections year-to-date. But if you look at the expense side, you can see where red uh is definitely lower than it was last year in terms of the expenditures this time of the year for the March, for the month of March. For the month of March 2018, we collected $6.5 million. The majority of that, which you see is the purple, is the QBE money that comes from the states. In the expenses, we spent $11.6 million. As you can see there, the larger piece of the pie is instructional cost that we spent at the school. These two graphs, budget versus actual, for revenue and expenditures, kind of give you a broad view in terms of what the budget is, black versus red, where we are collections. So as you can see, the budget versus actual for revenue, we're right on par exactly where we need to be for collections based on the budget. If you look at budget for actuals for expenditures, see how the red line is starting to pull away from the black? And that's, that's indicating that where we are spending less can be a budget in year-to-date. The last KPI is the, where we track the deficit. As you can see, the first column there, so the budget, that's where we had set up the budget, the deficit under that budget. And then each month along, you can see where we are in March. Currently, we have $594,000 projected surplus here-to-date. And that is the financial statements.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Actually, that's a little bit of applause. I'm sorry, that's a celebration. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Hamel?
Mr. Bobby. If I may, I would like to take this public opportunity to say that working with Mr. Hamel this year has been a pleasure. And I think we have found a very good working relationship where we're finding where we can continue to be efficient with our funds. I'm really excited about where we are, how we positioned ourselves, and how we're continuing to flex, I believe, strong fiscal responsibility. There are, there are resources in this organization if we take the time to really analyze our budget and make sure that we're getting it to our students. At our last work session, I taught about the fact that we are using austerity funds of $1.2, $1.3 million and putting that right back into the classroom. If we were still in a position where we were deficit spending and doing other things, we wouldn't have the opportunity to do that. And so this really, it's really important that we take time to look at the budget because it does impact what we're able to send right into the classroom. So I, Mr. Hamel deserves a lot of credit. It's been a pleasure working with him.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that report and that, those words. Doctor, do you see a recommendation on the financial report?
Yes, Mr. Bobby. I recommend that Board of Education approve of the financial report versus the CBI, Mr. Hamel.
Thank you. Motion, a motion, please. Moved by Dr. Knox to approve the financials. And second by Ms. Thorndorff. Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Thank you. Next on our action items, we have policies, regulations, and exhibits to be posted for public review for four weeks. We have policy GAN, which is Employee Tobacco Use Revised, along with regulation GAN R1, 100% Tobacco-Free Schools, which is new. We have policy IDAG, Values Character Education Revised. Policy JCDA, Student Code of Conduct Review, along with exhibit JCDA E1, Student Code of Conduct Revised.
Mr. President, I move that we, but these are three policies, one regulation, and one exhibit for public review.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Ellis. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, they've been really well.
Yeah, I just have, have one, and I should have asked last Thursday, but I'm sure we're gonna do this. But I think last year with, with Student Code of Conduct provided that this gets passed, that we have a short version of that that goes, that's available. Did we have a short version last year, kind of an abbreviated version that we, and I forgot how we used it, but.
What we did is we took advantage of the inside cover of the Code of Conduct, do some succinct in language that was more easily understandable than the legalese within the code to explain the contents.
So we'll do that again this year.
Certainly.
Thank you. All in favor of posting these for public review? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item number is four, Policies, Regulations, Exhibits to Adopt. Over send, we have policy IA, Instructional Program Philosophy. Have there been any?
We did receive one public comment that you all.
So we received one public comment just recently. Have you had a chance to review the public comment?
I have, sir. I don't believe that this public comment, it's actually asking the board to consider extending. When you read it, it's extending the language and considering philosophical components of what's already being recommended. I don't think it, it will be my recommendation for the board, act on this policy this year.
Kind of a motion, Ms. to, is there a motion on adopting policy IA, Instructional Program Philosophy? Ms. Ellis? Move to adopt this policy?
Yes.
A second? Is there a second? Thank you. Questions?
I would just, since, since we don't have time to really read this, and if we can refer this back to committee, I'm not talking about the policy, I'm talking about this.
Oh, the public comment.
Back to committee for review.
So put it as a discussion item for the committee?
Yeah, just to make sure that we considered all parts of this, since we don't really have time to read it and deal with it right now.
So we can, it has the board elects to move to pass the policy as written and then have a discussion about the public comment, just to be sure that there's nothing, no amendments we want to make to the policy after the fact, which is always available to us. So yes, I think that's a great idea.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Thorndorff?
I'm actually wanting to explain, I gave me my homework and gave this, obviously, I don't feel comfortable. So that's going to be my own reason for explaining.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting this policy? Any opposed? And any abstentions? Ms. Thorndorff, thank you.
So this will be on the policy agenda for the.
Correct, as a discussion item. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Then we have a number of consent agenda items that are listed on our agenda.
Mr. Bobby? Yes. If I may, there was a question from Dr. Knox related to consent agenda item number seven. And I just want to make sure that the entire board receives the information. And it was a further question, which was, was the total price connected with the NWA MAF adoption? The total price is $121,750, of which, I think it's worth, worth a dollar for the important. The MAF assessment tool for K7 is $106,250. There's professional development, and I really want to point that out, there's professional development embedded in this, this proposal for $12,800. I've, I've heard from staff members and the board in particular that when we engage in initiatives, we have to make sure that people understand what they're doing and how, how, how to use it in their classrooms. And so we made sure that that was accounted for. And then there's a line item of $2,700 for progress monitoring that allows us to identify young people who may qualify to work with DEI teachers or who need extra assistance. So that's the third component that, that goes into cost centers for $21,750. We apologize if I have an outline, I have an executive summary.
Thank you. And do you have a recommendation there on the consent agenda items, of course?
Yes, Mr. Bobby. It's my recommendation that consent agenda items five through twelve be adopted by Board of Education.
Moving on, Ms. Davis?
Second.
Second, by Ms. Worley. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor then? Any opposed? Thank you. Next on our agenda is item number 13, we approved the purchase of International Center for Leadership and Education and Rigorous Curriculum Design.
Mr. Bobby, the Board of Education asked for a presentation of this, and I appreciate the opportunity. Dr. Gant will come up in a few minutes, but I would be remiss if I didn't take the chance in front of him to acknowledge the three or the four curriculum coordinators who will be coming up in a few weeks, the lion's share of this presentation. I have been impressed with them since I arrived in the district. We have amazing curriculum leaders in the board, ladies, you will see it in a few minutes. But I just wanted to thank them for their tireless effort to move us forward from a curriculum standpoint. The things that I sometimes talk about, and I'm the one that's publicly talking about it, you're now seeing the team. It includes Dr. Gant. It includes Dr. Pirlo and Nolan, our executive director of elementary ed, Mr. Harris, Michael Harris, our executive director for secondary education. But the people who are rolling up their sleeves, working with classroom teachers and principals, taking calls, taking the questions of, I know the administrator said these things, can you help me operationalize this one more time? It's the four ladies that you'll hear in front of in a few minutes. So thank you, ladies. And they have matching sweaters.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent and members of the board. Mike, I am very excited to be able to share with you. And introducing first, the members of our incredible team. I'll start, part on the left, right. So we have the Seon. So Seon cannot be here. And I want to remember to make sure that I announced her. Seon Hope is our KAB MAF reform specialist coming in for the evening. But Parton Blan is our KAB LA curriculum coordinator. Linda Huff is our high school curriculum coordinator. Amy Peacock, Dr. Amy Peacock is our KAB science curriculum coordinator. And Ms. Amrose, behind me, is our KAB social studies curriculum coordinator. So I wanted to introduce them to you. They are an incredible team, and they are doing incredible work. We engaged in a curriculum audit several weeks ago, but we had an opportunity to really dig into our curriculum portal, look at our curriculum that we currently have, identify where there may be opportunities for us to grow, as well as things that are working really well for us. We also had an opportunity to interview, the coordinators were interviewed, as well as instructional coaches were interviewed. And then we did a survey of core teachers, core curriculum teachers. And so we currently are waiting for the results of that audit because that audit is going to then move us forward in the work that we're going to do with our curriculum design. And so I'm going to turn it over to our curriculum coordinators, and they're going to talk to you a little bit about how we bring it all together, the curriculum instruction assessment.
Thank you, Dr. Gant, Dr. Means, board members, and attendees. We have a presentation, but it's behind you. So if you'd like, we're going to turn it over a little bit. We're excited as a team to present to you tonight, four together, the CCFT way, bringing it all together, curriculum instruction assessment. And these slides will represent our transparency, our philosophy, and how we do our work in teaching and learning. So this slide harkens back to when I first met Dr. Means in July of last year, when he talked about our system and our system's approach to many aspects of our district. And so when you look at this quote from Mike Wasta, it's saying that it's very important for us to understand that instruction and assessment are not separate, but they're function, they function together as part of the, intentionally aligned with the whole system. And so this is how we approach our curriculum, assessment and instruction as a system that is aligned and intentionally working together. So another thing that Dr. Means has brought to us and is grounding us always in why we do what we do. And we begin and end our work with a compelling why. And our compelling why is to provide a comprehensive way of thinking about curriculum assessment and instruction. And this is, this stems from a belief that all students should be afforded equitable access to excellence in education. And with any resources and materials and units that we create, that they are equitable, and that all students can access them with success. So when we're designing our curriculum with rigorous curriculum design, we are looking at really four pieces here. So if you look in the middle here of this graphic, we start with clear learning outcomes that are derived from unwrapped standards. And we ensure that they're matching instructional strategies, matching assessments, and matching learning experiences that are aligned to those unwrapped standards. And all of this, this is higher graphic, creates our units of study. And so Amy is going to show us and give us an example from different science, how all these pieces are aligned together.
So an example of what you might expect to see as a result of.